And Steve, if you'd like to read the script to start the hearing, that would be great.
I am calling this Bay Village Historic District Commission Public Hearing to order at 4:00 PM on Tuesday, October 14, 2025. Commissioners present are myself, Steve Thonma, Laura Shay, Craig Douglas, and Catherine Nelson. In accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, including the March 29, 2023 legislation extending the suspension of these provisions until June 30, 2027, we are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the Bay Village Historic District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom Meeting Platform or email staff@bayvillageac@boston.gov. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing.
Okay, so first thing on the agenda is the ratification of the September 9th meeting minutes.
Should I ask if everyone has read these?
I have read them.
Okay, well, can I ask for a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented?
I make a motion, we accept the meeting minutes from the September hearing as presented.
And I second.
Okay, in favor, I?
I.
I.
Okay, that's unanimous. So great, moving on.
Okay, so up next is our design review, and the only application that is placed on design review is 19 Cortez Street. The project representative is here. Matthew, I'm going to make you the co-host, so you were able to unmute yourself. In addition to share your camera as you wish, your presentation was sent to me, so I've included that in the application. And then for the record, just please state your name.
Sure, Matthew B. Ross.
And then you can begin to go through your presentation. I obviously have the presentation, and you could just tell me to hit next whenever you're ready.
Sure. The proposal is for building a 16 by 16 roof deck. We're seeking to replace a roof deck that was already on the property. We had replaced the roof last fall, which required the existing roof deck to be removed. We have, as I'll show you, we've made slight deviations from, so the proposed roof deck is the same size as the existing roof deck, but we have changed the location slightly, which I will walk you through in one of the coming slides. The proposed structure is pressure-treated wood for the frame. It's going to be on these little plastic pedestals that sit on the rubber roofing. We're going to use a composite wood flooring material, so like a TimberTech product in a gray color. And then the railings, we're planning on using a TimberTech Premier-style railing in black, so it's like a thin, black metal construction. And next slide, Jaclyn. So this is an image of the previous roof deck that we had demolished. So we have, in that brick square, you can see that's the staircase from the center of the building that exits onto the roof. The roof deck was placed in the back on the right-hand side of the building in sort of an odd pattern. The building permits for it were six, that were approved for that roof deck were 16 by 16, but in actuality, the roof deck was sort of an irregular structure. It was all wood construction. Next slide. So what we've proposed, the current roof deck that we proposed remains 16 by 16. It's actually a little bit smaller because of the carve-out for the staircase, and it's, you'll notice that it's moved closer to the front of the building. And I can show you some pictures that explain exactly why. So we'll have a swing out with some paver stones in the front, and then effectively just a square approximately 16 by 16 square foot roof deck. Jaclyn, next slide. So there is Jaclyn and, I believe Jaclyn and her staff went out and took some pictures from the road of the mock-up for the roof deck, and you can see that it is visible. My understanding is only from the Berkeley Street Bridge, and you can see that it would be a slight visibility of the railing in the front there. Jaclyn, next slide. So this is a view of when you step out of the door for the stairwell to where the proposed roof deck would be. And it, as you can see, it goes to the left and then towards the back of the building. Jaclyn, can you go one more slide? This is from further away on the right-hand side of the building, so you can see it is to the left of that parapet, which I think is, that's the visible section in the front there. And Jaclyn, one more slide. And this is to sort of show you the issue. So the reason we've moved the proposed footprint of it forward towards the front of the building is there's a number of, I believe there's a hatch and a number of these drain pipes, so it's the exhaust for the sewer stack. There's also a ventilation stack which is out of the camera focus. The prior roof deck, oddly enough, was built around these structures, and there was like wooden, sort of a wooden encasement that went up around them. Obviously, it's a sewer stack which vents the sewer for the whole building, so there's an awfully bad smell that comes out of it. And we also, our preference was to not build some sort of a regular structure for the roof deck on the exact same footprint that went around these pipes. So, you know, we slid the roof deck forward, which we believe has created the sightlines from the Berkeley Street Bridge. I will say, you know, we're hoping that the committee will approve this with the slight visibility. If the committee were to find that unreasonable, we'd be willing to rework sort of exactly where the footprint is and try to see if we can figure out an alternative design that perhaps makes it not visible or less visible. One option is to move it more centered towards the front, which would perhaps hide the railings behind the parapet there in the front. You can see that sort of increased spot. Another option is we would, we could try to move it back closer to where the existing roof deck was, either trying to avoid those pipes or simply building around them like the old roof deck was, which I think it's not sort of an optimal option, but we would do that if we had to. Jaclyn, I think that's it. Is that right?
Yes, it is. Let me go back. And then if the commission has any questions, please feel free to do so.
Yeah, I'm not sure I followed you, Matthew. Jaclyn, could you just go through the slides from the beginning a little more slowly?
Yeah, I mean...
I was with you until a certain point, Matthew, and then I got, maybe when we got up on the roof here, maybe I got lost. So if you could go to the beginning of the slide deck? Okay. Okay, so that was the existing conditions before your roof replacement?
Yes, that's the old roof deck before we replaced the roof.
Okay, next slide. And now this is the proposed location of the new roof deck in, to the front of the building as opposed to the rear of your building to avoid those sewer pipe stacks.
Correct.
All right, can I jump in and just ask to clarify that in this drawing, it's a plan. Cortez Street is at the top?
It's at the top.
Those are the bays. And so the top would be Cortez and then the turnpike.
Correct. And just to be clear, so the old roof deck was on that same side of the building. It was just slid backwards, so towards the bottom.
Towards the bottom, yeah, I got that.
And basically, those pipes are, there's two of them, I believe, and the closest one is right near the sort of the bottom of where we put the footprint now.
Yeah, I see that. Yeah, and I concur that having a pipe in your, a sewer pipe in your deck is weird. So, smart move. Okay, back to you, Laura.
Next slide, Jaclyn. So this one confuses me. This one is, there's the parapet, okay, and then the mock-up?
Is that?
Do you have a mock-up up there?
We do. We've had a mock-up up there, and Jaclyn and staff have been out there, I think, twice to look at it. We did two iterations of where to put it, so that you can see very slightly in the middle of that red circle is the post, is the proposed post for it. So it's to the right of that.
Oh, I see the post now. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And that is, I think that's the only, Jaclyn can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the only spot where it is visible, it's not visible from Cortez Street, I don't believe it's visible from Arlington Street, but on the Berkeley Street on that bridge, there's a spot where you can see it next to the parapet. I don't think, I don't think it's visible from the turnpike, although obviously Jaclyn didn't go down there to take pictures, but I suspect it's not because of the angle and it's not from Cortez Street.
Okay, so I see that two-by-four post. So that, what we would see there would be your, your black, simple black metal railing is what we would see there.
Correct.
Which way does the railing go off of that post, Matthew? Does it go to the left?
It would go, yes, it would go towards the left and to the back, but you would effectively only see the portion that goes to the left.
Okay, could I see the next slide?
Yes, so it's...
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is where I got weirded out. I didn't know what direction I was looking at at this point.
Yeah, so this is like, if you're, so those, those two posts that are on the right-hand side, those are like running parallel to the turnpike in Cortez Street. So the one that was visible in the picture is that one that's in the, in the right-hand side corner that's further away.
So this view is looking along the line of the street. The turnpike is on the right.
On the right-hand side, yeah.
Right, and Cortez and the turnpike are there, and Isabella's on the left.
Correct, yep.
Got that, okay. And the red mark is the top of the, what's the red mark show?
It's the, it's the top of the proposed railing.
Thank you.
And that door, that rusted, rusty door, is where you would come out of the headhouse and enter your deck?
Correct, and we're replacing that door as part of it, but yes, that is where you would come out, and there'll be two pavers and then, and then a step up onto the deck right there.
Okay. So the, the yellow post with the, the yellow post in the foreground of that photograph, so in the lower right corner, that is what I would, that's the same one in the photograph before that you would see from, no, I'm turned around.
No, it's, yeah, that is, that one is not visible because of that little parapet section. It's the one after that, so it's the, it would be that furthest post on the right-hand side, and then you would see the railing leading up to that post, but that post itself that you're talking about would not be visible.
Okay. All right.
This is basically the same angle, but from further away on the, sort of on the edge of the property's roof.
Okay.
This is from the very back of the deck, and it's showing the pipes that we're trying to avoid, basically. This is sort of facing towards Cortez and the turnpike.
Okay, I see the parapet, I see 95 Berkeley, I see the four posts. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, so in, actually, this one shows a good piece of where the railing is visible from the Berkeley Street Bridge there. So it's the, it's the corner that is to the furthest away on the left. You can kind of barely see the post there, and then it's going towards that one that's towards the parapet.
Right, and the parapet actually covers the view from the public way. It's just the non-parapet part of it. It's the lower part of the roof is where you see it. Okay.
Right, so I, actually, we had tried to position it behind that parapet to hide it, but the, but it's, it's, it's not, it's a very short, it's actually not as, it's like only, I think, a 12-foot distance, and then to keep off the edge of the, the front wall there, it's very close to try to position it to hide it behind that parapet, and then the only other option is to kind of put it back where it is or shrink it significantly to try to avoid those pipes.
What is the, so I'm looking at that photograph. I see the four posts are the four, the four yellow posts are the four corners of your deck. I see the tall stack pipe. What's the low, the low pipe with sort of a funny hat on it, just off your deck?
Awful good question, unclear.
What is that? We don't know what it is?
I think, we think, we think that it is the bathroom vents for the whole building going up. There's those on both sides of the building. But unclear, there's, honestly, there's a lot of old chimneys that are not being used up there. I believe that one, though, is being used, and it's the vents for the bathroom.
So if I, if you go into your bathroom and turn the fan on, this is the exhaust for that?
Yeah.
As opposed to the sewer?
Yeah, exactly. They're all daisy-chained through the ceiling into the sort of metal piece of conduit that comes up there, I believe.
Is there another slide?
I think that's it.
Is there a rendering of what the deck will look like when it's complete?
Just the architectural drawing.
Could I see that again? Trying to make that bigger. Can you make it bigger?
Uh, I can certainly...
Can you zoom into the deck instead of the entire building? Yes, thank you.
So, nothing fancy here, just composite planking. I think we're going to do like a medium gray and then just simple black steel PT runners, but then these, these feet that are meant to sit on a rubber roof, so, you know, pretty, pretty simple.
Matthew, may I ask, since the railing really is the only visible issue, let's just talk about the railing for a sec. It's going to be black metal. It's, what is it, a four-inch cross-section for the posts? Am I right so far?
I believe so, yes.
And then what about the horizontal elements? Tell us again what those are made of.
I believe they're banisters. Actually, our, my fellow trustee and, who actually owns the architectural firm that drew this, specked out that, he might be able to, he's on here, so he might be able to answer that better than I can.
Wasn't that specified in the very first slide that had some text?
It did, but I'm not sure I can elaborate on it beyond what it actually says there. So it says, composite balusters matte black. So I think, I think they're just the same TimberTech material, matte black balusters on it.
Oh. Okay, so the vertical, the posts are not metal at all. Is that correct?
I believe the corners, and I think the top are metal, and then I think the balusters themselves are like a composite, but...
Oh, okay. It would be informative to see, something that showed that. I thought it was part of the presentation that I saw earlier, when I looked at the PDF that was sent to me earlier, because, frankly, that's, it's the railing we should be thinking about, not the deck, because the deck is invisible, if I'm understanding this right. And I kind of was assuming that the railing was going to be like metal post and some kind of very thin horizontal element, although there would very likely be a, what would you call it, a railing, a top rail, and then there would be horizontals that, that fill in. And we've seen a lot of that in other applications that we have approved, because it's very, it's very minimal, and you can hardly see it, and at a distance, you can't see it at all just about, so.
We're happy to, we have absolutely no, I don't think, Jaclyn, I don't know if you want to unmute Mark Yanowitz who's on here. He might be able to speak. Well, I think basically the punchline is that we're happy to alter it in any way that would, that would make the commission happy with that. We have no attachment to the design of the railing, but I'll let Mark speak more specifically.
Mark, you have been made co-host, so feel free to unmute and, of course, state your name for the record.
Thank you. Yes, Mark Yanowitz with LYF Architects and also one of the trustees of the building, kind of trying to assist the HOA to do the proper thing here. We, I'm looking online. TimberTech offers both composite and aluminum, black composite, black aluminum. They have cable railings, they have all sorts of things. I'm online right now looking at the various options. In both cases, you know, they do have a composite cap or top rail, the horizontal, and then, and then you can get very narrow vertical or horizontal balusters. And, you know, so as Matt was saying, I think the HOA is fine with whatever the board would feel, you know, most acceptable to kind of minimize the impact of the railing. I did feel black made kind of disappeared more, but I, if I could share the, can I share the website online? Does that...
Can I make a suggestion on this?
Yeah.
We've, in the past, sometimes what we've done is to, in fact, often, is to approve this type of thing with the condition or the proviso that you show to staff, you know, a more specific example of what the railing's going to look like.
Okay. We could easily...
In my personal opinion, the, the key thing is that the railing business should be kind of thin and kind of unobtrusive from a distance, and probably what you were proposing would fulfill that, but it would be nice to see a confirmation. And there, as you say, there are different materials. Like, I just jumped to the, to the assumption that it was going to be metal posts with a, with a metal wire or something like that, but there are other ways. Does that make sense?
That does make sense, and...
You know, rather than trying to jump into a website and fooling around with that stuff, you know?
Yeah, that sounds good. We're happy to work with Joe and Jaclyn to, you know, if you all approve it with that condition, we're happy to work with them to find something suitable. Like I said, I don't think we have any attachment to a particular design.
Yeah, the premier, which, yeah, so they make a simple cable railing that truly, other than the post and the top rail, virtually would disappear from the ground.
Yeah.
And this is Catherine Nelson, and I just have some recommendation, and I've been listening quite attentively to this presentation, and surprised that nobody pointed to my roof deck, which is extremely visible when you are on the bridge on Berkeley, since I love looking at it when I'm coming home from Berkeley, down, up the street, whatever, because of the lovely hydrangeas, which are still surviving despite the storm. What I'm trying to say, you don't see that from Cortez Street, it's only the Berkeley Bridge, and the building that I am in had a roof done in 2019. Equally, the deck that was existing was replaced exactly to the same location space, everything. And we have a lovely black iron fence with that horizontal balustrade, if you will, very simple. You barely can see it, it all melts, you just see flowers or things of that nature if you look up that high up. But I presume that very few people look up at the top of the buildings, if any. So that would be my recommendation to make it even maybe more consistent with what people can view if they are on the opposite side in South End looking at Cortez Street from this side. So, so I believe the proposal is quite sound, and with the proviso that Steve recommended, I would be happy to support this proposal.
Can you tell us the address of that building?
Well, I will not tell you the address because it will not tell you anything. It's back of Isabella Street. We have a building that is, it's the first building on a corner. If you walk from Berkeley, you have the corner, I believe it's 190-something Berkeley Street, the one with the skull folding for the last three years, which probably should be removed one day because it's quite disturbing. And the first building before 23 Cortez, so we are between 23 Cortez and the corner Berkeley. So when you go on the bridge on Berkeley Street and you look up, you will see that's the back of Isabella Street building. That's why there is no signage, no numbers, with number. It's the back of our property.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so you can look, and I'm happy to even take a picture of the fence and send to the staff as what is already there. Again, I inherited that roof deck, just for full disclosure, so I don't know how it happened, but I know the pictures from the before, which were very similar.
Okay, well, we'll be happy to provide images of the exact railing to kind of show a minimal components to it. And I think we'd be happy to, to get your approval with that condition.
Are there other comments or questions?
I mean, I just have one question. Mark, because the railing's in the middle of the roof, I'm assuming that you don't have to meet the requirements for the four-inch spacing for balustrades or anything like that. Is that correct?
I would be still inclined, I mean, it was also, it's a security railing that we want to, it's true, there's no fall protection per se. At the same time, we don't want, you know, there has been evidence of other, our neighbors climbing, climbing over to the previous roof deck, and, you know, it's more for security. We don't want residents to leave the deck and go onto the roof, you know. Obviously, if a worker needs to get on the roof, he can bring ladders and accommodate it, but, so it would, if it's not four inches, it'd probably be five or six inches, something that someone wouldn't easily crawl through.
And the height of it, 36 inches because it's residential?
I would go with 42, because we consider this multifamily commercial code.
Okay. All right.
It could, it could do, again, you could justify 36 because there's no fall concern. And, and we would do that if that's your preference. I mean, I think that can be justified, because it would, it would not be as high by six.
Right. Yeah, if it was only 36 inches, would it still be visible from the Berkeley Street Bridge?
Slightly, you know, for that photo, but it would be less, six inches less, you know. I think from that, from that angle, you'd still see a portion of the top.
I recommend that you align with the correct code.
Yeah, that's what I...
Yeah, I, it's, there's, there's no, if you went 42, that would be the, the typical kind of commercial multifamily code.
So otherwise, I would just echo Steve's comments, you know, that it should be black and as minimal as possible in terms of the dimensions of the handrail, the posts, and the balustrades, whether those are horizontal or vertical.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for the applicants from the commissioners?
No.
Should we ask for comments from the public? Is there any one waiting?
Before you do so, just feel free, please, read this script right here and then...
I'll read this, okay? Is that what you're asking? Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom Meeting Platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email at bayvillageac, whoops, again, bayvillageac@boston.gov.
Okay, we don't have any raised hands, and we don't have any emails in my inbox right now.
Okay, well, then, hearing that, may I ask if anyone is ready to make a motion on this application?
I'm ready to make a motion, and I will second.
And I will second.
Well, uh, Laura, you need to say what your motion is, please.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approve the applicant's design of the roof duck as presented with the proviso that staff, um, with, with the proviso that they provide to staff the actual materials used for the railing and posts and balustrade.
Okay.
Do I, do I have to rephrase that?
No, it's good, it's good. Um, and so is there a second to that motion?
And I will second this motion.
From Catherine, and so all in favor, say aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Craig? You're an aye? I think, very good. So it's unanimous and the, uh, application is approved with the proviso that was stated. And I would only clarify that the, uh, the goal is for that railing to be, to seem to be minimal when seen from a distance.
Understood.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All good, thanks. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, so next on our agenda is administrative review. Um, we actually have, uh, more than we've had from the last couple of months and I will go through them uh, with images and details attached. Um, and so feel free to stop me if anyone has any questions regarding any of the applications. Uh, just a reminder that these are placed on administrative review because, uh, they fall under uh, what is approvable according to the regulatory standards. Um, but first up on the list is Six Edgerly Place. Um, this is just repointing brick and mortar, um, specifically on, uh, the pilasters, or that's how I say it. Um, and then in addition to, um, cutting and pointing, uh, deteriorated mortar joints on the left-hand image you'll see here on one of the side walls. Um, in addition, another, uh, part of their project was to, um, also, uh, infill the sidewalk area with just a minimal amount of square footage and place back the existing brick to its original configuration. Uh, the next, uh, administrative review item we had, uh, was nineteen Fayette Street. They came to us last month, uh, for window replacement, which was approved. Uh, they're coming here again to seek, uh, oh, Laura, yes.
Sorry, Jacqueline, I don't, uh, back to Six Edgerly Place, I don't understand the, um, image of the sidewall and what they're proposing.
Yeah, so, um, this is just a sidewall, um, that they're going to be doing or already conducting work on. This is an emergency repair. Um, so there was water intrusion within this building, which, um, allowed for this to receive emergency approval. Um, and so what was happening was that, um, there was just deteriorated mortar joints along this wall. Um, and this is the wall where they're going to be doing two hundred and forty-five square foot um, to, to fix that deteriorated, uh, mortar joint.
Which wall is it? Which, what am I looking at here?
So this is a rear wall that is facing along Edgerly and then there's a, um, intersecting street along Edgerly. If you, I'm trying to remember what exact street that is and I can look that up really quickly for you. Uh, but it is a minimally visible street by the public way. Um, and it is a budding, um, another, uh, building, but again, it's still the same address. And I will give you that street in just one second. So, uh,
Is it possible that that's, when, when you say a street, that it's actually a, a little tiny, uh, walkway between the large brick building and a much smaller, there's a new brick building that went in there and deep in on Edgerly Place, am I right?
Yes, but this is, so this is Six Edgerly and the building is basically a budding Winchester and Edgerly. The sidewall that they're conducting work on is going to be on Winchester Street and it's going to be the side, uh, facade of that building that is facing Winchester Street. Hopefully that can provide more clarity. It's a little difficult to explain.
Yeah.
The image, but, yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that that's a very tiny, uh, like a walkway, a little easement back there.
Yeah, that's not the wall that's on, that's not the side of the building that is on Winchester. The side of the building on Winchester has lots of windows on it.
It does.
No, it is one on, on South Cedar and Winchester, was to my understanding. It did take a little bit of researching for me to understand where in relation, so it is a little bit difficult. Um, but I can provide more sort of understanding of that, um.
I, I, I have it, uh, Steve's, Steve's right, it's, it's a, a little, uh, alleyway. Between that and another, and two, uh, residential dwellings. And I can easily see it on Google Street Images.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Of course. Uh, so next one, nineteen Fayette, again, um, this is just a replacement of a non-original door at the balcony with black fiberglass door. They came to us, um, last hearing, uh, for window replacement, which was approved. They're coming to us again to replace, um, the, uh, door at the balcony, which is deteriorated. Um, it is, uh, going to be replaced, matching the existing color. Um, so I've circled which door that is exactly, um, so it is facing that balcony, um, right there. Does anyone have any questions about that one before we move on to the next slide? Nope, alright. So the next one is forty-six Fayette Street and forty-eight Fayette Street. Um, forty-six Fayette Street basically replaced all of their windows, which were all approvable material, um, and type. Um, so I've just only for the sake of just, um, streamlining this have included images from the front facade. Um, but I'm happy to provide annotated images after the hearing, uh, if any of the commissioners would so wish. Um, but these are just replacing non-original windows, uh, with six over six, uh, black fiberglass windows to, uh, fit with the context and the historic character of that street. Um, does anyone have any questions about forty-six Fayette?
I, I have a comment. I just wanted to clarify that, uh, forty-six and forty-eight are the same properties that came to the neighborhood and to us and the, uh, ZBA asking for a, uh, a substantial addition in the back, which was rejected. And, and so the same applicant has come to us with a much more, uh, basic kind of request, which is like, replace the windows. Also, am, am I right in assuming that the shutters will stay?
Yes, we received, uh, word from them that the shutters are intending to stay.
Okay, other questions?
Nope. Alright, and then forty-eight Fayette Street, um, very similar, um, at the front and rear facade. Just removing nonoriginal windows and replacing them with six over six black fiberglass windows, again, uh, to match with the rest of the streetscape. And then if anyone has any questions before I move on to the next slide? Okay. Uh, the next one, uh, was twenty-two to twenty-four Piedmont Street. Uh, so this, uh, application was to conduct exploratory work on limited locations of the brick facade. Uh, what they're doing is removing no less than three, three square feet of brick, uh, to assess the, uh, structures, uh, stability, um, and safety. Um, and then they're intending to place back those original or, uh, that just brick to, uh, its original configuration. So, uh, with the photo that the, uh, applicant provided, you'll be able to see here specifically which brick and why they're doing so. Um, unfortunately, you can't see my pointer, but the applicant was kind enough to include those blue arrows that show that there's a little bit of signs of deterioration with the mortar joints. Um, and so they're intending to conduct exploratory work to assess how they can proceed with that. The next one is twenty Shawmet Street. Uh, this is another emergency repair, which we have already provided them with an emergency repair uh, approval placard because there was water intrusion and in fact, uh, the mortar, um, and the bricks were actually bulging out, uh, which was obviously unsafe, uh, to the structure and to the public. Uh, but what the applicant did was, uh, they proposed to repair the sidewall at the top floor level of twenty Shawmet by removing the brick wall and reinstalling that same brick um, in its original, uh, configuration. Does anyone have any questions about twenty Shawmet Street? Okay, and then there is another app for twenty Shawmet Street, but a different scope of work. And that's to, uh, remove and replace deteriorated windows, uh, with six over six black fiberglass. And in addition to, uh, remove a deteriorated French door to match with the existing and including the color and the design, uh, which was consulted, um, and facilitated by staff with the applicant. Um, and I believe this is the conclusion of our, uh, administrative review, but does anyone have any question?
I have a question about yours, the statement you just made about twenty Shawmet, about their application. You talked about a uh, entry door?
No. Um, so if you look right on the bottom, it's a little small, uh, but there is a French door that's just
French door.
There, um, it's actually labeled, uh, number ten. So it's a French door, um, as for its use, it's not really used as a main, uh, entryway. It's sort of a decorative, almost like mini patio, is to my understanding, um.
Is that something that can be replaced in kind? Does that exist in today's wor, world?
Yes, so the applicant did share to me, uh, the shop drawings, uh, matching the material and the color.
I guess that, I, I, I'm gonna go back to what Steve said. This applicant, uh, is the same applicant as forty-six, forty-eight Fayette. Uh, this applicant came to us for all three addresses for, um, a zoning relief. Um, and now this, um, which, which they did not, um, either apply for or did not receive. Um, so we understand they did not receive the zoning relief that they did apply for, for twenty Shawmet. So this is sort of the lesser case. They're just doing a renovation and re, uh, replacing these historic windows. But I'm suspect.
So, this is, we're just the director of design review. We, we only approve applications as they come to us, so. And when you say we, that's not the Bay Village Historic District Commission. I think you're referring to the neighborhood association.
Yes, I am.
We have, we have nothing to do with zoning, so we cannot take that into consideration. So we're looking into in-kind replacements and, um, I do want to mention that we don't typically do this level of presentation for administrative review. Uh, we started doing it because that's all we've been bringing lately to, to this commission and we have new commissioners, but just so you know, in the future, we're not gonna be doing this level of presentation for administrative reviews, which we had never done before. And if you do have questions about administrative review applications or design review applications, you should let staff know when you're reviewing those before the hearing, so we can
Before the hearing, okay.
So we can address any issues that you, that you may have. But again, you know, we accept these, uh, applications, um, and, you know, as they comply with the design guidelines. So, you know, we don't take into consideration past projects, future projects, projects at other addresses.
Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome.
Okay, and does anyone have any other questions? Alright, awesome. Uh, Steve, if you would like to.
Yeah, could I ask for a motion to approve all seven of these, which are a package? And, um, can someone make a motion for that, please?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, these seven of these that are part of the administrative.
Okay, second? I'll second that. And all in favor, please?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, so I, is that unanimous?
That is.
It is? Okay, so the, it's all approved, thank you.
Alright, lovely. Well, as for, uh, staff updates, which is next on our agenda, we actually, um, coming to my mind, um, I have nothing to update you all with. Um, just thank you again for, for being here. We appreciate your time and effort, um, and thank you.
Can I ask a quick question?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you said that, uh, you and Joe would be visiting our famous neighborhood, maybe even tomorrow. Um, is there a way to connect with you and when and where would that be?
Um, sure, you can email us, um, after the hearing, uh, and we would be happy to find a time tomorrow that works for both you, Joe and I.
Okay.
Fair warning, um, Melrose Street and Isabella Street are being repaved tomorrow.
Good to know. Does anyone else have any, um, questions, uh, again, before we adjourn the meeting?
Okay, uh, motion to adjourn, please? Maybe it is adjourned. We just did the, skipped over that. Okey-dokey. Bye-bye.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.